You can't tell you about the scout days when the road was called by vehicles who went over to ensure there are enough spaces allowed to avoid a collision. The strip placement can't have that to count, remember, these are seven residences and a number of vehicles. Because that had been placed three tenths of a mile in the corner of eleven sixty-five and eleven sixty-six, which means that they shortened things to count, okay? And I have a picture here showing where the location is. Everybody in town has a copy of the pictures, you will see that, uh... You'll see that the count sign displays vehicle. I think here at two or six from one, okay? This is three tenths of a mile on eleven sixty-five, which left out three trailer bar houses, one house that's compact with Mr. Henderson, and three houses across three foot approximately uh, the way, but by ten fourteen vehicles, okay? So now, I need to write it down, use what I want, uh... My desk, I can't read right, it's... Alright, it can't tell you that the only business on County Road thirty-three ten, which is perpendicular to County Road thirty-three sixteen, is one chicken farm for four point three miles at twenty-four five. It was paid a couple years ago and was never in any condition, about twenty-two miles, eleven forty-three, and eleven sixty-six, hundred eighty-six. Words from my day to one day past, we delivered three to Wayne Farm on the fourth on County Road thirty-three ten. To avoid an improper combination, this door in County Road eleven sixty, is that a reach of town, mailboxes, which will show the static number of taxpaying residents on any road. There are six point five miles and seventy-four mailboxes on County Road eleven sixty-six. There are four point three miles and forty-four mailboxes on County Road thirty-three ten. But, there is one road in thirty-three forty-nine, one block long, with a dead end off of thirty-three ten. Eight hours, that brings the mailbox count to fifty-two on County Road thirty-three ten. The density of these two roads are all much the same, except that there's a lot more traffic on County Road eleven sixty-six of all nine, a lot more. What is it doing for me? I'll say to you, roads need to be wide, you do Walmart standards, all our property values are diminished because of our bad roads. Can't sell our properties and get the kind of values that their houses don't work. Uh, the development infrastructure builds fast after the decision to repair County Road eleven sixty-six. Five billion dollars dollar number divided by sixty-seven counties, each only five million per county. That's absurd. We hope that big counties deserve and get a piece of the pie. For let's say, every one of you in that county, the county commission, which we have here, okay, makes the decision for where to go. Also, I have not seen one road in this county that was partially paved. Even so, to combat would be the total disenfranchising to the rest of the taxpayers on County Road eleven sixty-six. This is our last chance. Call the commission before I can, I don't know if that's anybody to get from, eleven sixty-six, except for myself. So it appears to me that, according to this, and I'll just digress here for a little bit, this old town is in the number thirty-three sixteen, which is a long road, alright? She said, "Communities, uh, made up of nine, the commission is going to do a roundabout at the spring deal intersection of thirty-three sixteen, and that's going to go down." And, uh, I'm going to be talking to a few other people and say that, the most important thing is to do this. Now, I'm not saying that that's bad, I'm just saying that you should have a little input, and I don't have any idea. So apparently, uh, to support, it's plain, and I don't think anybody's interested in anything else. And for me, I didn't own eleven sixty-six by choice. My part of the road was going to be repaired, and what am I doing? I'm wasting my time. Because I wanted to see that everybody knew I was disenfranchised on eleven sixty-six, alright? And by choice, I'm living here. Now, here we have, uh, we got this problem, and back on the number here, okay? And, uh, showing here, eleven sixty-six, there's no strip place here, a strip replacement right across here, so you get a traffic count over the road. Uh, the other thing too, is the speed. Uh, see what happens here, uh, if you look here, on this, this one, you can have one, okay, you'll see that here, by placing this forty-five mile per hour speed sign at a mile and a quarter from the corner of eleven sixty-five, when it gets this corner and hurt, I look a lot clearer here about, this is a three block, well, they're getting up, okay? So, this is the mailbox place, and I asked the council, the commission here, to place the sign at the corner of eleven sixty-five, it wasn't done, it was placed here, right here at eleven forty-three, the mile and a quarter up the road. So, we're doing that, we've got pictures here on the signs, they're there, we've got pictures of the other bad parts of the road, and I just want to share one more thing here. I got two tires for my road road, and the tires, you have pictures, they're worn on the outside. I'm writing, now, I scored number one on the Kansas test in nineteen seventy-four for the city of Blackmore, was not given the job because I was black, okay? Now, what I'm saying to you, and I, oh, and I may detract you, the Mustang nineteen sixty-four is active as in New Jersey, and in transportation. So my experience with roads, with dangers and safety and so forth, I tease them out, and what I like to do on the other base, not just for me, but for all residents. And the short change is us, others, I said, on the road, I don't, I can't, I can't, I just can't imagine, and I'll just go this avenue, there is everything black and white, and I don't have to, and I was born here, and I was around, it's black and white. Now, what I'm saying to you, I would have thought that if my section of the road were not being paved, then I would say, well, they don't like their lives, but it's not if they're black. We're here, not road, alright, I mean, it's two white people, so they're only up in, and I got an exception paid. So I don't get it at all, I really don't. Uh, my, I have too much to add, need to add to this, the bad road, we need a strictly enforced speed sign on our forty-five, okay? And that should be placed, just like here on the, uh, eleven fifty-three Youngblood, right at the intersection of eleven fifty-three, there's a strictly enforced sign on both ends of that road. That's what we need over there, these signs are placed up in the city of Troy, we need those signs, we need that sign, don't remove the forty-fives and eleven forty-three, bring it back, because what I've seen, of course, they'll use this as a transition zone, okay? So when you get, when you get the strictly forty-five here, strictly enforced, and you get to the second one at forty, eleven forty-three, that has to be enforced. And you can get, if you can, the enforcement officers who enforce that, which when they come around the curve, at my hour, man, they're getting up, okay? That's my story.
Thank you, sir. Question or comment?
Question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Salter, have you been out and sat down with our engineer, Russell Howard?
You want to know why I haven't been out there? The first time I called Russell, that'd be good for you to go there, now, I'll be substantial, I don't want to be lazy, first time I called to Pike County Road Department for anything, gosh, I felt like I was in another world. I was really, really, really distraught over the idea of the kind of worst that I had on the other side, I was going from one gentleman, what I was talking to, and I know, and it just, it disappointed me from that standpoint.
Well, and I'm, I'm, I don't mean to cut you off, but I know we're short of time, but I, the only reason I, and I, and I hate you had a bad experience the first time you called, because a lot of things you've talked about, a lot of things in here, um, you've done a lot of research on different things, but, for instance, um, what's been done in Pike County since the gas tax pa- gas tax passed? Russell's got a lot of paperwork on that, that he could share with you, I think it's almost sixty-five miles of pavement. I know we started, uh, and I don't want to go through all this, I don't want to take this thunder away, but, um, I think it would be a really good, um, I personally like that your concern. I would like to say we don't make decisions on how and where we pave roads based off of some of the things that you talked about, and, um, I'm glad that it's evident on your road that we don't do that. But, it would be a really good trip for you to go out and sit down with Russell and, and, you know, let him go over some of the things that we do, and some of the reasons that they do some of the things we're talking about, um...
If I were to leave, would you excuse me, sir?
Sure.
If I were to leave the county, I would go to Pike County Mission, at the Pike County Road Department, yeah.
Did you go there, or was it...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Well, just, I'm sorry, I just wanted to, to bring that up, because I know a lot of the things that you list in here...
I didn't know this too, I looked up the internet for Pike County Road Commission, they got one out of five, that's it.
Pike County Road Commission?
Yes. That's what is recognized, how the road service is done in the county for the road, might have looked that up.
Yeah, because I'm not familiar with the road commission, so...
Never heard of it.
Never heard of it.
Okay. Thank you for being here. Uh, Mr. Mason, how are you, sir? Come on up, bud.
Yes, sir, please. I hope y'all are, thank y'all for letting me, Mr. The, uh, good ribbon gun this morning, sorry, I still have my tennis shoes on, I ain't wearing none of the damn things, but the, uh, I work for Congressman Barry Moore, and, uh, I live in Montgomery, in the big office in Wetumpka, and I've just, I'm the main field rep for all the counties in District Two, if y'all know who Congressman Moore is, he took Ms. Robyn's spot, who was there about ten years, and, um, did a good job, and we've worked with a lot of their staff. And we also have two, our native of Pike County, Laine Strauth, who that works for us, and then, um, another Reagan Thompsons from Enterprise, her husband actually just went into dental practice with Dr. Hendrix here, so. And actually Congressman Moore's looking at opening an office here in the next couple months in the new judicial building, so excited about that. But if we can help y'all with any kind of federal agencies, uh, VA case work, uh, Social Security, Medicaid, if you have questions about federal legislation, or flag requests, or military academy nominations, uh, Joan Cox in our office handles all that, she did West Point and Naval Academy, and all of that, and we have an office in Andalusia, Dothan, Wetumpka, of course, it's got its DC office, and then hopefully one in Troy, um, probably by the summer, I would say, but, and I've got some callers here, so if we can ever help y'all, don't hesitate to reach out, thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate the music.
Thank you very much.
Engineer report.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Um, first thing we have under new business is our monthly project update, and under that, we provided you, um, with a list, there's a memo in there that looks like this, with a list of our upcoming, uh, road and bridge fund resurfacing projects, excuse me. This is the same list that you've had, that you've already actually approved and had posted on your website for quite a while. So, uh, we're just asking for permission to go ahead and advertise that project for bids, and, uh, like I said, we're, we're developing plans on that now. Uh, second thing is the County Rebuild Alabama Annual Report. If you remember, this, this report is required by the Rebuild Alabama Act, it has to be presented to you and entered into the minutes of your first county commission meeting of the year. You don't have to vote on it, doesn't require any action on your part, it just has to be presented to you, so. That report is in your agenda package, and it, uh, details all of the work that, uh, that we did using that new funding in the previous fiscal year, ending twenty-twenty-one.
Remind us why, um, I know, I know there was a reason a lot of these roads carried over, because we weren't able to pave quite as much of this, remind us why.
Well, and what he's alluding to there is that a lot of these projects, there's two pages there, and a lot of those projects were listed on the report that we gave you a year ago, they're the same exact projects. The reason we listed them again on there is the law states that whatever project you spend any of those funds on has to be on this list. So, if we don't complete a project, you know, and completely pay for it by the end of the fiscal year, it also has to, if any, they'll, 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 it'll require funds being spent in the following fiscal year, so therefore it has to go on the report again. But I think we did, you know, we tried to, uh, make that clear on the notes down there at the bottom, just for, this will be posted on your website and on the bulletin boards, um, as required by the law, put out there for the public, so. That's all the new business we had. Under current business, um, we have our, uh, ER projects on there, we did open bids, we already talked to Commissioner Copeland, we opened bids for the bridge repair project on, um, County Road thirty-three sixteen, and I should have said there, we attempted to open bids, we did not receive any bids on that. So, you know, we're looking at, um, what changes we may be able to make to rebid that project, and hopefully get some bids on it.
The bridge Mr. Salter was talking about?
That's right, yeah. Yeah, the bridge was, um...
Yeah. The reason that traffic can't go that way is because this was a bridge that was damaged during the last storm, that we've been working, what, a year and a half now trying to get?
Right, we, we were, we were, um, we have a, a Federal Highway Administration Emergency Relief Program project that was approved, and, you know, we, they find, they have finally given us the approval to go ahead and advertise for bids on it, so, we did that, didn't get any bids. But he's right, the, the bridge is still open, but it's posted for a gross weight limit of three tons, so larger vehicles, trucks can't cross it, but, um, you know, our goal is to, once we complete our project, is, is to be able to remove that posting. And then, so we'll, we'll, we will rebid that, or re-advertise that project, and we'll be back at a future commission meeting, hopefully to make an award on that one. Then, under personnel, we actually have, uh, four items there, I think you have a memo for each one in the agenda package. The first is a resignation that we're just notifying you of, the second is, uh, recommended hire for the, uh, open position we've been advertising, and then we have two employees who have completed their six-month probationary period, and we're recommending permanent status for those.
I have a question on one of these for the probation period.
Okay.
Or, let's see.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that January first of this year?
That is, let me turn through the memo. Yes, and the year is a typo, apologize for that, that, let me clarify that, so that, um, for the minutes, that, that is January first of twenty-twenty-two, right.
Alright.
Looks like the other one's right.
Go ahead, sir.
That's all we had?
Any, any other questions or comments for the engineer?
Yeah, just, I know we talked about this, and I know, but give everybody an update on the bridge on sixty-six eighteen.
It, uh, all of the, uh, concrete work, the, the actual structure is complete, um, so really, all, all that's left is the, uh, approach work, backfilling, and, you know, rebuilding the road back, so i- it's getting close to completion.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
David, nine-one-one, you got?
Good evening. Uh, I've got a few things that, uh, nine-one-one is doing that we just want to let you and the public know about, um, and then, if, I know we're on the agenda for current business, if you want me to talk about that, Mackenzie, or, that's pretty straightforward, y'all have made a lot of appointments to our board recently, so. Things that, uh, that we're doing, uh, we're transitioning to a new translation service that offers, um, more languages, um, and more translators, and, uh, is lower cost to us, but provides a better service, we believe. Um, so that is part of a statewide program, just about everybody in the state, nine-one-one wise, is going to the service called Voyance, um, so if anybody calls in and doesn't speak English, we'll be able to, to speak with them. We recently underwent a upgrade to our, um, it's called Texty, which allows us to receive text to nine-one-one, um, so that we'll get better location information, um, we got rudimentary information when you texted nine-one-one before about your location, and now we should be getting, for most smartphones, a GPS coordinate that tells us, um, what the degree of accuracy is to that, um, and that also, with that update, comes with translation as well, so if you text nine-one-one and you speak French or Spanish, our operators will be able to automatically translate that, um, and communicate back with you. Baldwin County nine-one-one has donated us a plotter printer, uh, that we've got to go pick up sometime in the next couple of weeks, um, but that will allow us to begin our own, um, map printing, so if you guys need maps of anything, uh, we'd be happy to help you out with that. Um, I've received several questions from y'all over the past few months about virtual Pike County, uh, virtualpikecounty.org is now up to date, and we have that line of communication open, so that will remain up to date. Um, and then the final thing is, um, we are going to begin training, uh, into this month, beginning of next month, our dispatchers in emergency medical dispatch, so when someone calls nine-one-one, um, for a medical issue, we will begin to ask them triage questions and also provide, uh, medical instructions, pre-arrival instructions before the ambulance or fire, fire department gets there, um, and that is, that's going to be a big deal for saving lives, we can provide, uh, high look maneuver instructions, CPR instructions, even if the person has never heard of CPR, we can walk them through those instructions, uh, over the phone. So it's a highly effective program that's been used around the state. Uh, any questions about that, or the board appointment questions?
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Nine-one-one is out, or EMA is out, I'm sorry, and then attorney's report out?
No.
Okay. Any commissioner have a report at this time?
Um, we had a, um, I guess the session started, um, we met, met with, uh, lawmakers, I think the first day of the session, as the legislative committee, that was good, Wes was up, uh, our only representative, um, spent a lot of time in the room. The, they're in special session right now for the allocation of all the funds, um, I'm not sure how many changes have been made to the bill, things that would, uh, that are in there that would impact us, obviously, is, um, there's about two hundred million dollars for, um, um, a deck of grants for broadband, just in here, um, there's a little over two hundred million dollars for water and sewer projects, some of them, um, I think all but like a hundred million dollars of that is for emergency projects, and I'm not sure exactly if and how we fit that, but there's also a hundred million dollars in the bill for matching funds for, um, like, for us and, say, Pike County Water to apply, um, and get some matching funds out of the state's ARPO money, so that, I know, we've been discussing some of the possible water for projects that might help our dollars go further.
Absolutely.
Um, the only other bill that they tried to get through in the special session that really affected us was one that actually allowed us to spend our money with, uh, private companies, it was really narrow, it basically stated that, um, counties and cities in the state could spend their ARPO federal funds, um, to promote broadband and, and, um, uh, you know, basically partner with a private company to do broad- broadband, um, it was not allowed in the special session, so we'll see how that goes, um, in the rest of the session, but, um, with, without that exemption, none of the counties can spend their money on broadband, um, so, that's really everything, I guess, as I know, that's affects us and it's been going on up there so far.
CP, you guys?
Just want to remind everyone about the email that Mackenzie sent out from the city of Greenwich about Friday, um, this way and under the chief of police.
Yeah, or?
Yes, yes.
Okay, anybody else? Alright, it is valuable.
Okay, the, the first item I have on here actually, um, did not make it onto the agenda, but, uh, I talked to Chairman Sullivan about this, um, some appropriations I've been, I believe have been requested from Troy University and the Cattlemans.
The, uh, just to elaborate a little bit, the Cattlemans have asked us to support them in a ranch rodeo, and also in the August rodeo that they always have, uh, we've, I guess, supported them with different things in the past, and that's why they're asking. So I thought I would ask the commission if we could give them a thousand dollars for both rodeos, uh, we would have a banner that would say the Pike County Commission somewhere on, in the arena, and then the same kind of deal with Troy University, if that's, uh, please everybody.
There's thousand, uh, twelve commissions?
No, that's, no, it's one, one time deal.
One time deal. Yeah, one time deal. For each.
Yeah.
If there's, yeah.
Two, three to, three total things?
Yes, uh, the ranch rodeo, then the regular rodeo, and then the, uh...
Troy University.
Troy University.
Three thousand dollars told us what we got them at.
One thousand each, and it's a one time deal.
Okay. Okay. Uh, put in the administrative report, the first item I have is, um, FMLA request from the probate office, um, and that's just a regular request, they've already been out, I believe they'll be back sometime in February as the plan on that FMLA request, um, uh, so that's just a, a regular business there on that. The second item is the HVAC controls contract renewal, this is what controls the, uh, heating and air, our energy savings that we did a few years ago in fourteen, I believe, uh, this controls all the air conditioning and heating systems for this building and the courthouse, it's where there's a control system, um, we had this in our budget, um, and so it's, uh, got a little bit of increase from last year, it's less than five hundred dollars increase, but it's something that I think we need to continue to do, this is something that will actually add on in our new buildings that we're building, too, and it has been a huge energy savings to have these controls in place for these buildings. Um, the next item is the Rave Mobile Safety Contract Renewal, uh, while we've got David here, um, they gave us three options, a one-year, a three-year, and a five-year, um, I kind of, from your perspective, are we having any issues, do, I mean, do you see any reason not to continue on with this contract? This is what we pushed to go towards instead of having the, um, sirens and stuff, and it does a whole lot more than the sirens do.
Um, so I know myself and Herb have been talking with them, um, how, what the future of their technology is, um, and from, there's two parts of it, there's the learning side, and there's the night one side, um, we're very hesitant about the night one side, um, about what it can deliver versus what we can give the breed in the remainder right now, so, we're not sure about that vintage, um, but from the learning standpoint, um, right now, I certainly wouldn't discontinue it, right now, um, three years from now, a year from now, um, we could very well have better alternatives, uh, but, we're not terribly satisfied with some of the features or the training, um, but just for straight learning, it works fine, but what we're concerned about is iPods, which is the ability to send messages to those who aren't subscribed, um, which are where you get the, the notification and the alerts, I think, um, and they say that the system supports it, but they haven't been able to prove to us that the system supports it, so that's our, that's our...
So that's probably something we need to push forward so that we can talk a little bit more, because it sounds like we probably need to do something for the next year, but do we need to do a one, three, or five?
Right. So the difference is just a couple hundred dollars?
Yes.
So I mean, obviously, you, you probably can roll to next meeting, but if, question on that, because this is, you know, obviously, we work really hard, and I'm not going to say we've had really good luck, but we work really hard trying to get people to sign up.
Yeah, right.
So if we swap to something else, does that ever work?
Okay. Actually, there's another thing to consider too, um, that I've forgotten about, is that the state, and, uh, this last, first late session, we were on for that third, or a state wide lighting system, and they didn't fund it, that is supposed to be taken up during this session, we funded that system, and then that would reach the state of May, and the plan, my understanding of it, and Herb would know it, and I would, but my understanding is that they intend to give access to that, to everyone, um, and that's through, uh, a service that is much more robust, you know, and what it, you know, so that needs something.
We probably need to talk to find out if it's been...
So between now and the next meeting, if you will get Mackenzie some more information, then we'll know where we need to go. Thanks.
Okay. Um, the next item, Lockheed Martin has included a letter, uh, requesting an extension on an abatement that we did a couple of years ago, um, they're not through, according to the letter, they're not through with the, uh, the building, and they're looking at, due to some changes, uh, they're estimating approximately six million dollars more, um, in spending that would be eligible for the sales and use abatement, and they have to get this approved through y'all at this point in time, because it's a, it's another extension, they had one extension already approved through Alabama Department of Revenue, but this has to come before the commission on doing this extension.
What's the length of the extension?
Um, through the end of twenty-twenty-two this year.
Okay.
Decent for the first two twenty-two.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, that's that one. That's that one. The next item is voting precinct resolution. That will need to roll to current business. As you all know, that when we did the redistricting, that would change some of the voting precincts where people would have to vote. Myself and David and Jordan and then Ms. Deverteal and Freddie Teal from the Board of Registars have sat down and looked at some items. I'm hoping David can get us something in the next couple of days to get out to you. We need something approved by the 14th meeting because of the 90 days that the Board of Registars has to get the information out to anybody that changes their voting areas. We've gotten the old district lines, the new district lines, the old voting precinct lines kind of mapped out, but it changes when those lines. He's going to take it and change where the people have got to be changed from a voting precinct and just map it to the closest voting location for you to review. At that time, you'll need to review and make sure that that's what you see fit for your constituents in those precincts to make sure there's not a reason why they should vote somewhere else. But we've got to get that approved, but we need you all to review it once he has that information. I know it's crunching this too fast. I understand that this just all kind of falls back to how the census information came out so much later and trying to get it to y'all. But he's hoping to have something the next day or two that will get out to everybody so you can take a look at it.
What format is it going to be?
What format do you want?
Something where we can review. That's what we struggle with.
I'm doing it right now, right now. So if you want, you're right, I recommend you do that, or if you want, give lists, however. Tell me what the best way for you to do it is.
Well, that's the issue we had last time because, you know, obviously, it was RGIS. And nobody has RGIS. And so we couldn't get access to the software, so we actually had to have somebody sitting in the room with us, which is, I mean, not a problem, but it's, they can't read as well. We need time to review it. So I don't, I mean, I don't know what the answer is. If there's a backdoor, we can log into your system to be able to look at it, or if it's on your system as a layer.
Yeah, it's on my system as a layer. And I'm welcome, I'm happy to come to you, or you should come to my office, or come here and do something. I'm not licensed, so I couldn't, you know, install it and do that.
I don't think any of us would want that, but I know how we log on now. Is there any way to log on and have a...
It may be, I'll look into see if it's possible, put it on Virtual Pike County and see if we can do it that way. Have it as a proposed thing and see if they can do it. Someone that's not public is able to do it.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I can try to talk to them and see.
If not, does it, can you export as a KML?
Yes, I can. You can all get Google Earth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's probably the easiest thing.
That's probably the easiest way and then do a supporting file that shows you the, you know...
Because he could give you all the road numbers too, that it would affect the people, plus a mapping, a visual of the areas.
Yeah, so if you can...
That's going to change.
Definitely as a KML where we can look at it visually and then have the...
Yeah, he's not going to necessarily have names, I don't think, but he would have road, road numbers.
Right.
And like, you know...
You can see the road number on the map.
On the map, so that you know where you are because everything has changed.
And export would show the census box.
That KML would be, that's Google Earth.
Yep.
So that's a free program that you can put on your computer and you can look at it yourself whenever you want to. It's got mostly right, at least it's good enough you can cross up if you're mad.
Well, I can export my, export my road numbers too and the KML as well if you can vote on it.
That would probably help.
And at those points, then you can see how the people are in the spot.
We'll be able to do that.
More data, the better.
And we'll get that out to you as soon as possible. So just wanted to kind of give you an update, but we will need to pass a resolution at the next meeting. I think they have to have something by the 15th. Is that the date that they're telling us at the Board of Registars?
I think so.
Yeah, I think, because she needs, they need, they've got to have time to do the changes, like for the road numbers, if they're changing from voting at here to here, they've got to have time to get that put in so that they can send out those postcards that they're required to notify people within the, or in the more than 90 days before the election. Okay, that's everything on the administrate's report under current business. I don't have anything...
Mackenzie, let me ask you a question about something. When I was in the courthouse, latter part of the year, preparing my taxes, I saw someone, ladies room, and said to me, Commissioner, we don't have hot water in the courthouse. Do you know anything about that? That there is no hot water.
I don't know. Have you noticed that in those bathrooms or anything?
What? Anything to be said?
Hot water.
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
No, what is it?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I've never heard that, yeah. I can check into that.
Yes.
Okay.
Really cold.
Okay, I will, I will check into that.
Okay.
The, under current business though, the first item that I've got anything under is number three, the American Rescue Fund Act. We did receive our RFPs back. We received four in the office. I've kind of given you all, they had an evaluation table given to each one of those in the RFP. I've taken that and read the proposals and from looking at them, I would recommend that you all go with Arrington Law. They're the ones that I felt like would meet the needs of the county the best based on their proposal. A couple of them did not, and you'll conceal this, did not even have offices in Alabama. Two of them did, but Arrington Law had quite a bit more experience in work with county governments and with federal projects, that sort of thing. And they were one group. The other group that did have an office in Alabama, it was two separate kind of proposals. One was an accounting firm, one was an attorney, so it wouldn't be the same group that you were working with. And I felt like from those of y'all that have been on the committee, you would want to be able to sit down with one group and not having two or three different groups to meet and sit down with, and that would be who I would recommend based on their proposals, would be Arrington Law. And those entire books are in my office if you want to come read the full proposals. They're, and they're in the office. But I would recommend that we go ahead and go with Arrington Law so that we can move forward on what we're trying to do.
Quick comment on that. So we were waiting on final rules. We got those from Treasury, right?
They have issued the final rule, yes.
We're obviously waiting on this, which should happen this week. So if we go on and do this, we'll have, hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have all the pieces in place for us to make the decision.
Yes. I would, I would recommend whoever that you, if you want to go ahead and go with Arrington Law, I'd recommend you go ahead and do it tonight so that we can get an agreement signed and in place with them and get started on what we can do. I believe that the final ruling actually may have changed some of the rules, some of the ways that we came up with the number for the revenue replacement in the first year. There may be some places to go out and get some more money to increase that, that number to replenish the general fund for the lost revenues. So the faster we can get going on it, the faster we can know what kind of numbers that would change and what we can do with those numbers and everything. That's kind of where we've been at a standstill, is not having a definite answer on what we can do and how we can move forward with using those funds. So if we go ahead and do it, I want to go ahead and get a meeting set up with the committee and all so that we can get back into looking what we're going to do and how to move forward for that. The next item, I'm going to skip the personnel for the probate office. I'll let Judge Bun, he's got a recommendation for all, let him come talk to y'all about that. But if we'll move on down to the E-911 Pike County Commission's District Board, there's three appointments that are due to be redone. Two of those are at-large appointments and one is the City of Brunnage representative. We did get a request from the mayor. They have appointed, as you all know, a new police chief, and she has asked that that would be placed in that, I mean, not that at-large position, but that position for City of Brunnage.
What I'd like for us to do tonight is go ahead and appoint the new chief and then hold it on to the agenda until we can get the other two done.
And then that's all I have. Judge Bun?
Keep swinging the bat, you'll hit the ball sooner or later. We would like to request that the commission approve Jamie McWaters to come to work with us as a court assistant to Step 5. They know what those numbers are. It should be on there, I hope. We get, yeah, there's like a code at the end of all these things. I never know what it is. But she is our choice and we'd like you guys to approve her. Start with us on six-month probation.
Questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, Judge.
All right.
Appreciate it. Pike County Commission Work Session will now come to a close. We'll take a quick five-minute recess and come back for our regular meeting.
Tell them, Bo! Wiley Sanders Truck Lines is looking for teen drivers. That's right, teen drivers, starting out at $150,000 a year. Yeah, I said it, $150,000 a year. Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Who's got the T680? At Wiley Sanders Truck Line, we put God and family...